We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPem.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier, and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPem.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Okay, you should have another button there where you tap the little one.
I'm gonna finish your spread.
All rise. Giles County Department of Public Safety, we pray to God with a brief desire. Mr. Ruff, you need to clear a foot.
We pray to God. Father of heaven, we are honored to be in thy presence. Father, we're thankful for the beautiful day that you blessed us with, for the praise that we can enjoy, and just the glory that your creation has brought. Father, we're thankful for the good health that you have provided for us, just the air to breathe, our families, friends, and Father, all the physical and the spiritual blessings that you bless us with, for we know that you have all come from you. Father, we pray for those who are less fortunate. We pray for Mr. Sutton, that you'll just be with him. We pray for others that are struggling with other ailments. Father, around this community, we've been faced with a lot of hardship and just a lot of trials for this time. We're thankful for great success at finding individuals of Mrs. Cross. Father, we pray for others that just continue to go through struggles and tough times, that you will continue to be with them, and that you will bless them, bless their families, and help them to be steadfast and put their love and their trust in you, Father. Pray that as a community, we will continue to be able to wrap our arms around them and give them the love and the support that they need. Father, we're thankful for the freedoms and liberties that we have. We pray that we'll never take these for granted. We're thankful for your word that gives us direction, gives us hope, gives guidance through the slide. We pray that as we look into your word, that we will gain that wisdom and knowledge, that we'll put it to use, and Father, that we'll be able to do great things. And as we walk on this land, for our families, for our friends, for this community, for this great state and this country, Father, we pray that you continue to bless us and be with us. We pray for those from a federal to the state and local level, that you will continue to watch over them and bless them, and we pray that they will look to your word for guidance. Father, we pray in all things that your will will be done. Father, we're thankful for Christ and that perfect sacrifice, him dying on the cross for our sins, and the hope of salvation that he can find through your word and through him, Father. That grace that we do not deserve, Father, we're thankful for it. We're thankful for your love and your mercy, and Father, we pray your blessings upon us. We pray that as we look into the business of the county, that you will guide our steps, help us to make good and right decisions that will fortify this county, not only now, but Father, for the future, and that we'll be able to make you proud of it, Father. Continue to bless us and be with us, and we ask all of these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to make one change to the agenda this evening. I'd have the sheriff make a statement to us before, or just after the approval of the minutes, if that's okay. Otherwise, are there any changes to the agenda? Yes, Mr. Vador?
Was that resolution to dissolve the full committee, was it moved to new business? Since it failed in the committee, or?
No, it's listed. It's on the agenda right after, well, it's 2024-151 as a resolution. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Or is open for an approval of the minutes? Yes, Mr. Reed?
Make a motion.
And a second, Mr. Hopkins? Any comments or discussion or corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, before I turn it over to Sheriff Elton, I'd just like to say, there's two things that test the character of our community. One of them is grief, and another one is adversity. And our community responded in grief about a week and a half ago with tremendous support for a dear family that lost a child. And then the adversity of having a missing person for five days, and the tremendous outpouring of volunteerism, as well as every member of the county government coming together to pull the great team together, and thankfully successfully pull off that search was wonderful. A wonderful way to pull off the end of last week. So I'm going to turn it over to Sheriff Elton. Thank you for being here, Sheriff.
Good evening. I would like to thank every individual and organization that assisted last week. But first and foremost, I would like to thank God for the miracle that took place on Powell Chapel Road. Saturday morning, Ms. Cross was, let me see, let me make sure I got this right. Last Tuesday, Ms. Cross was reported. Miss, immediately members of the Giles County Sheriff's Department, as well as Bill Meyer, Josh Young, Jerry Van Mitchell, and Willa Chavez, and 911 also assisted. And all of their staff went to work looking for Ms. Cross. Other organizations such as TMA, TXB, and the TBI assisted alongside the Sheriff's Department. The most wonderful thing was that all of these organizations come together during this time, working together as one to accomplish the mission of finding Ms. Cross and bringing her home safe. This operation continued for five days and brought in over 200 volunteers each day. In my career, I have never seen such an operation, with so many different emergency organizations work together so effortlessly to achieve the common goal. I say that Giles County Operation of Emergency Services is first-class with their knowledge and networking skills. It is truly remarkable. If anyone at any time, if they have a comment about OES or questions, I will be their biggest cheerleader and be there for them. They are simply the best. If you weren't in Powell Chapel Road during these last five days, you missed a blessing to see who you have representing your county, state, and country. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Reese here for the EDC.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow. As we did last year, we saw a seasonal uptick in unemployment. The last numbers we have were for July. Unemployment after being below 3% for four months in a row jumped up to 3.7. I think last year, you know, we said that that seemed to be kind of a seasonal pattern that we saw with people looking for summer jobs. We saw that again this year. We expected last year that we would see, once the summer was over, those numbers start to come down. They did. I will say that I think we have some headwinds facing that's over the coming months. We had Human Resource Leaders Breakfast last week, the First National Bank hosts for us, and several of the HR leaders there associated with automotive supply businesses are saying that they're seeing some pretty challenging conditions in their business right now with the end demand being down. It's hard to know how long that's going to last, but if you read the douche, you'll see that auto sales across the U.S. has not been as strong as people were projecting with the B23 months ago. So I think we will start to see the unemployment until that situation gets better, probably be a little bit elevated versus what we've seen. Kind of put the numbers in perspective, you know, I mean, just 150 people moving from the employed to the unemployed can make a 1% difference in unemployment. So it's been running as low as it has, as long as it has. I think we need to be prepared to see that going a little bit higher and keep our fingers crossed that, you know, conditions in the economy will start to improve and that will reverse itself. Update on a couple of projects. The Project Verde, which was the renewable natural gas project we've been talking about, that project is effectively on hold right now. The investor that was behind that project has decided, kind of looking at their capital needs across their system, that they have some other opportunities to invest, that's $62 million, in places that may be trying to find a better return than this project would have. And so from that perspective, it is on hold right now. One of the things that we are looking at the afternoon meeting, as a matter of fact, tomorrow, with some representatives from the TBA, as well as Pulaski Electric, to kind of ask the question, you know, if you look at this kind of investment, you remember that project was intended to take the natural gas, inject it back into our local system, but you actually can take that natural gas and produce electricity with it as well. As a matter of fact, the other plant that we've talked some about that's in Northern Ireland, that's what they do, is they take that natural gas and produce electricity with it. And the size of this facility would produce around nine megawatts of electricity, which is not insignificant. It's probably a bit of electricity if you look at it in context of what BES uses. So we will at least be looking at that. I think it's a long shot that the economics could make sense, but we will have a look at that and I'll have more to share with that the next time I'm here. The last thing I'll say is on the site development grant. We have a kickoff meeting tomorrow morning to work with the engineering team to start talking about the scope of that project. And hopefully over the coming weeks, we'll get the information pulled together that we need to put that out for bid. And so we should get that process started, and maybe not the next time I'm here, but the time after that, we'll have some idea of what we think we're all going to have to spend on that project. So remember, that's Lot 5, Site 4. Questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Reese. Okay, next item on the agenda are public comments, or are there any members of the public that would like to speak on any issue on the agenda? Yes, sir. Come forth to the podium, one at a time.
My name's Charles Ruerd. I'd like to speak to the issue of nonprofit funding. I appreciate the work of the commission and the issues that they have to face and deal with. But I don't think the commission really needs to grapple with the issue of keeping nonprofits viable and funded. I think that there are other methods than the tax dollars going or being spent to keep nonprofits afloat. I've spent a good portion of my life working in nonprofits. I had to raise my own salary. I had to raise my money for what I was doing. At one point, I was administrating a mission hospital, and we needed a good source of electricity that was stable, as the country couldn't provide that for us. I had to find funding to build a hydroelectric plant that would service the hospital and the hospital station. That didn't come out of public funds, tax dollars. There are other ways for funding nonprofits. In Nashville, there's the Center for Nonprofit Management, which is willing to work with any nonprofit agency to help them in their management and in their, how they go about funding and being viable. Foundations provide a large source of funds, monies, for nonprofits. And foundations have to be registered, and by law, they have to give a certain percentage of their monies every year to whatever it is that they want to fund. There's an entire listing of those foundations in the database online for the entire country. Nonprofits of any sort can look on that database, find who is funding what they want to do, and then submit an application. My son works for a nonprofit. It supplies or distributes food throughout the world. In fact, they're the largest distributor of food in the world for disaster relief, famines, or any other sort of thing. Their funding comes from foundations for the most part, and from private donations. Another option is within our community to set up something like United Way, where all the nonprofits can participate in funding. It would be ongoing, not a one-off situation, but it would go from year to year to year. But like I said, I don't think the commission needs to be spending its time and its energies in seeing that nonprofits remain viable. Thank you for your time.
I believe there's somebody else wanting to come up?
We are a nonprofit, and one of the things you need to know is that this last year, all of the maintenance operations and all of the funding it took to repair the center and keep it going was financed 100% by grants. None of the money that we had came out of anything other than grants that we wrote. The other thing I want to let you know is our seniors' population is continuing to grow. There's going to be more and more seniors. The other thing we're finding is that seniors are becoming more isolated. And the more isolated they become, you've got your opportunity for depression, you've got your opportunity for just passing away. It's clinically proven that we can add four years to a senior's life by having social involvement in the activities. We've just picked up a new volunteer that's been starting, just starting to work with us, that wants to put in more programming, and that we can keep more things going. You also find when we do the funding, we have three people, myself and two part-time people. We can only do so much funding and continue to run the center. So what we're asking for is that $20,000, which is then matched by the state, which then provides 50% of our funding. So other than the funds that we can gather from, like for now, for example, for the shoe fund that we're just starting. So those are the kinds of opportunities we've got, and I would greatly appreciate your support so that we, in fact, can continue for our 49th year and get into the 50th year of our total operation. Thank you.
I'm Jenny Adden, and I'm just here to support the Giles County Senior Center. We are nonprofits. At this time, we thank you all for everything you've done to help us keep the center going. Also, we have expanded, and we are trying to be self-sufficient. We have a lot of new programs, a lot of fundraisers, things that are going to bring in money. We've also entered into in-kind revenue, which, if we have a fundraiser or we do something, we can turn around and double back money for the center. So we're into some new things. We're trying to get it going, and we appreciate everything you've done to help. Your generosity has played a crucial role in our past achievements, and we hope we can count on your support once again. And like I said, we're trying to get new things going, and we do have United Way. We're trying to get a lot of new programs for the center. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dennis Tucker, and I am the chairperson for the Giles County Senior Center. And we represent the Giles County Senior Center. And the director was speaking, was Jim Gerlach, and Jenny Adden's our accountant. And just a few facts, like I said, and like Jenny said, we are trying to be self-sufficient. We are trying a lot of new things because we understand that our seniors need someplace to go. They have put in their time, they work in the factories, they work hard, they pay in their taxes, you know, so they deserve to have a place that they can go to. We service at least 33 participants with meals in-house, approximately 335 services serviced with meals on wheels in the town. We offer Walk with Ease, and ET Southern, and We offer Walk with Ease and ET Southern and Exercise Focus at the Glassy Recreation Center. And they have been going down the, you know, play. They have a pool table there. Anyone is welcome to come in and participate in any of the activities that we have. And we also have themed potluck dinners. And we used to do that around six times a year. Yeah, so, you know, and we invite the community to come in and participate with us. So with that being said, we appreciate everything you have done for us, and thank you for your time.
Thanks. Are there any other comments? Up one more?
I'm Bethy A. McNally. I came to speak with you one other time when you were talking about budgeting the nonprofits. And I was very grateful, and you made a decision that you were going to fund the nonprofits. I am glad that our county is moving into the 21st century. I'm glad that we have an emergency department that can... I'm glad that we have an emergency department that can help people in need. And I applaud what they did for these folks. That could happen to any of us. Places like the Senior Stipend actually allows for resident care for some of those families. Just because we're moving into the 21st century doesn't mean that the last 50 years that you guys have funded nonprofits, the nonprofits in our county have been doing things that we would like have been done, but the county cannot afford to fund everything. They're only funding part of these guys' budget. Yes, there is a big organization called the Middle Tennessee for Nonprofits up in Nashville, and they do give out money. But every grant you write, every grant you write doesn't mean you're getting money. You can write a lot of different grants and never make any money. But you still have to take care of the people that come in for your organization. This county has done a lot, and I'll say that, you know, the executive director of the media here has a lot to do with that. But just, just all of his ideas are not the only ones. Earlier this year, there was a pride fest here in Giles County that was given the right to have the exhibit out there. The mayor's executive decided he's going to schedule two events that same day. And I think you guys know what happened. It was a mess we had. It looked like the KKK had come to town. The police were out in the courts with guns, with streets barricaded. Why would anybody with their right mind go to a festival with that kind of tension in the air?
Ma'am, can you just stick with the topics that are on today's agenda? Like nonprofits where you started, that is a good place to stay.
Your leadership gave you a deep minus the last time I was here. I'm thinking that considers some of the funds that we are having today for court costs might be quite on his plate. I hope that all of you will deepen your heart and decide that the last 50 years was a bosh. Or if those people at Ladder County had a good idea, and maybe it's not a bad idea, to take a nonprofit that is doing good work and help them continue.
Which would you name, one of those? Thank you. Are there any other comments today on issues that are on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Move on to elections.
Elections for voters voted in large, we have the following reelections. There are Darryl, Darryl with Abigail, Lindsey Nicole Adams, Teresa and Valentine, Brooklyn Bay, Becky Yoski, William H. Flair, Alexandria, Dibble Bowles, Anna De Kleiner, Tammy Sue Fox, Mary Tagen, Stan Anderson, Agent Amy Jerry, Robert Kirby Laxton, Savannah L. Malone, Trent Perry, Al Mordi, L. Oliver, John C. Perkins, Diana J. Watkins, and Roosevelt Finfield, Mallory Whitworth. The new application for Kelly Renee Clem, Antoinette Hall, Thomas J. Hannah, Surti D. J. James, and Helen Turner.
Mr. Wilber, motion to Joe Brue, and a second by Ms. Jones. Comments or discussion? Yes, Mr. Kretler.
It just says on here, Antoinette Hall. I think you could do a note read for a business. I thought it had to be a person.
That's a lady, for now, just Antoinette Hall.
I was saying to the building. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? That was a good move, Brad. Please vote. You watched it.
There's not a strength in votism up here.
At both, 20 ayes.
And the motion carries. Okay, this item on the agenda are six reports. The Giles County Finance Director Report, which includes following: Giles County General Fund, Drug, American Investment Plan, Probation Fund, Highway, School, Federal, Food Service, Debt Service, Capital Projects, Highway Capital Projects, Education Capital Projects, Education Capital Under Two, and Other Capital Projects. The second report is the Veteran Services Department Annual Report. Third report is the Giles County Public Library Report from July of '23 to June 30, 2024. The fourth report is the Giles County Highway Market, Giles County Road List. The fifth is the outcome of the Legislative Committee with a recommendation to change Rule 15. And the sixth is a letter acknowledging receipt of a certified copy of the fiscal year 2025 budget. So I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Jones.
I make the motion to combine all of the Legislative Committee, that makes me consider separately.
Okay, so we have a motion to combine 1 through 4 and number 6, consider second. Second by Ms. Curry. Any comments or discussion on that? Combine those five reports. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That is a motion carries. Well, entertain a motion to approve reports 1 through 4 and number 6. Ms. Jones. Any a second? And a second by Ms. Curry. Thank you. Any comments or discussion on those reports? See you now. Please vote.
And both, 20 ayes.
And the motion carries. So that leaves report number five, which is the outcome of the Legislative Committee. Ms. Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to move this go back to the Legislative Committee due to the conversation upcoming about referring to committees.
Okay. And a second by Mr. Robelsky. Any comments or discussion on that? That's a motion to move this back to the Legislative, because we're going to have another discussion that's already on the agenda to talk about committees and committee times.
I'm talking about the specific resolution.
Not yet.
Move this is what?
Move this report.
Make the Legislative Committee rule change sensitive of this.
Meeting times, that's correct. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Womble.
I'd like you to explain the process of us discussing something in the committee, and then it going into reports and being approved without a two-third, a real change being approved without the two-thirds voting.
Okay. Okay, the process is when somebody, you or any commissioner, wants to submit a recommendation for a rule change, it goes to the Legislative Committee. It passes out of the Legislative Committee, in this case, by two, was the recommendation. And then it comes to the full commission for either a two-thirds vote or an up or down, or in this case, a motion to move back to the Legislative to reconsider.
So you didn't ask for a two-thirds vote, you asked for this big look at as a report.
Well, that's a good point, is we needed to break it out separately anyway, because this needs two-thirds support.
It's also not in our package to review what we're voting on.
Certainly it is. Absolutely it is.
It is.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Okay, so we're going to vote on sending this back to committee, and that only needs a majority vote. Okay? Please vote.
19 ayes and 1 no.
Okay, so that motion carries, and that discussion will be taken back up in the next list.
Next order of business is resolutions. The first resolution is an amendment 2024-47, authorizing amendment of the 2425 budget campaign to your plan 101.
Ms. Curry?
Motion to approve.
And a second by Ms. Brue. Comments or discussion? Yes, Ms. Savage?
I'd like to make a motion to move the nonprofit contributions and vote on them separately.
Okay, so a motion to vote on each of the nonprofits. Second is by Mr. Robelsky. Any comments or discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go back and do a vote. So the motion in the second is to split out each of the nonprofits individually. And I'll tell you when you can vote. Okay, please vote. Yes, just to split them out, no, just to keep them all together.
13 ayes and 7 no's.
The motion carries, so we're going to deal with each of the nonprofits individually. So I'll entertain a motion for $24,700 to be approved to the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Bedore makes the motion, second by Ms. Curry. Comments or discussion? Okay, please vote.
14 ayes and 6 no's.
Motion carries, that funding is approved. Next is a $5,000 request from the Child Development Center. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Curry, second by Ms. Goolsbee. Comments or discussion?
17 ayes and 3 no's.
And that funding is approved. Next is a $2,000 request from Decisions, Choices, and Options. Ms. Brue, a motion, and a second by Mr. Reedy. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, please vote.
17 ayes and 3 no's.
Funding is approved. You have the Giles County Veterans Alliance requesting $2,500. And Ms. Goolsbee, motion, and a second by Ms. Curry. Comments or discussion? Please vote.
18 ayes and 2 no's.
Funding is approved. We have a $5,000 request from Kids Place, and a motion by Ms. Goolsbee, second by Mr. Brue. Comments or discussion? Ms. Goolsbee?
I just want to say this is a really large part of our community where our children are concerned. And they're a great help, and I don't know what we'd do without them on many days. If you have to deal with them, bless you and do your blessings and thank the good Lord.
Any others? Before you vote? Please vote.
17 ayes and 3 no's.
Funding is approved. And the Senior Center requesting $20,000, a motion by Ms. Curry, second by Ms. Reedy. Comments or discussion? Okay, please vote.
19 ayes and 1 no.
Motion carries. I will say for members of the public that weren't able to attend the committee meeting, each of these decisions were thoroughly vetted in committee. So you may not have heard much discussion here tonight, but there was a lot of discussion in committee. And for those of you who are part of nonprofit centers, you know. Okay, that moves us to 2024.
We've got to go back to the rest of it.
Oh, my bad. Sorry about that. All right, so entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Ms. Curry and Mr. Womble. Any comments or discussion on that? Okay. Please vote.
20 ayes.
And the motion carries, resolution is approved. Okay, next amendment?
Next amendment is 2024 dash 48, authorizing amendment of the 2425 Budget Highway Plan 13.
Mr. Rattman?
Motion to approve.
And a second by Mr. Reedy. Comments or discussion? Please vote. The vote is 20 ayes. Motion carries. Please vote.
The vote is 20 ayes.
Motion carries.
Next resolution is 2024 dash 49, naming a bridge on Bald Road over Elk River to the GBB Memorial Bridge.
Ms. Curry?
Motion to approve.
And Dr. Lake's record. Okay, and Mr. Rattman? Comments or discussion on this? Okay, single none, please vote.
The vote is 20 ayes.
Motion carries. That's resolution.
Next resolution is 2024 dash 17, naming a bridge on Shug's Creek Road over Shug's Creek to Johnny Wayne Rattlet Memorial Bridge.
Okay, Mr. Rattman?
Motion to approve.
And a second by Mr. Adams. Comments or discussion? Single none, please vote.
The vote is 20 ayes.
Motion carries. Next is Resolution 2024 dash 51, which is a resolution to dissolve the school committee that did fail Legislative Committee 4 to 3, but the sponsor wished to go forward. We're looking for motion. Ms. Curry? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to send that back to the Legislative Committee scheduled for August 27.
Okay.
Mr. Rubelski, chair of the committee, any seconds? Any other comments or discussion, Mr. Bedore?
The point of order on how it is on the agenda currently. Uh, I thought we voted last month unanimously for resolutions to go to the appropriate committee before being added to the full commission agenda. This has been on the agenda since the email went out, two or three hours before we even met on this. I'm just, for future reference, I'm just curious. Does the committee have to actually consider the resolution before it can then be put on the agenda? Was that the intent of the resolution?
Yeah, that was the intent, just based on the notification requirements of publication. Um, the sponsor wanted it to go into this month's agenda, and it was on this month's committee meeting. So that's the way it was constructed. I don't think that's a point of order. If you'd like to revisit the rule on how that's, how that's done, we can do that. It did go through, and what's your committee, right? Legitimately, and that's why it's here today. If it had not come through committee, it wouldn't be here today.
Understanding, but it was added to the actual agenda before we did consider it. I guess it's all on the line now.
Yes, Mr. Reedy?
Yes, cannot anyone bring up any, um, resolutions that they want to break up without going through any?
Well, you actually, actually, that's a rule we did revisit and change so that no resolution can come to this body unless it's gone through an appropriate committee first. Yes, Mr. Jones?
And I think when we done that, I think I said over and said it's going to come back to bite us.
Well, another thing that you said was going to come back to bite us was something that didn't get through.
Yeah. But you...
Okay.
But it's something to consider, that we had unanimously said as of last month that resolutions must go through an appropriate committee. And now we're talking about potentially dissolving committees or at least consolidating committees. So just something to keep in mind, last month's resolution that passed.
Yeah, so this has gone through committee, it's on your agenda, there's a motion to send it back to Legislative in a second. Any comments or discussion on that? Uh, Mr. Rattman?
It went through committee. It failed, but it can still be brought up, and that's what we're doing, I believe. So there's nothing inappropriate in the rules of what we're doing.
Okay, if there's no other conversation about whether or not to send it back to committee, that's what we're voting on. So yes, is to send it back to committee, no is to vet it out right here today. Please vote.
20 ayes and 8 no's.
Motion carries, so it'll be back on the Legislative Committee. Next resolution is 2024 dash 52, approving the guidelines for appointing the Lincoln Tax Attorney Trustee by Giles County, Tennessee, for 2021 personal property taxes. Mr. Savage?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 52 and 53.
Okay, motion is made to combine Resolutions 52 and 53, and a second by Ms. Rubelski. Looking to these are very similar resolutions for 2021 and 2022 personal property taxes. Any comments or discussion about combining? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion is approved, combined Resolutions 2024, 52, and 53. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Savage, and a second by Mr. Hopkins. Are there any comments or questions on those resolutions? Yes, Mr. Bedore?
Just to comment to the public that this authorizes a local attorney to go out and help tell me Roswell's office, collect, um, delinquent taxes out there. And, um, his, that attorney's base should not exceed 10% of all delinquent personal property taxes collected. So I think that's a little consistent with what we've done in the past, and we enforce someone to go help us with collections, so. Just so they have some references to what we're doing.
Okay, good. Any other comments? Single none, please vote.
20 ayes.
And motion carries. There is no unfinished business. Is there any new business? Uh, Mr. Jones? Uh, Ms. Ms. Woodard, go ahead.
This is not new business, but I would like to thank Steve and Mary for their dedication over the years, because I think this is their latest full commission meeting.
We're going to suspend the rules and give you the floor. How about that?
Okay. Uh, we're really thankful for the cause, especially. It's been a long ride, it's been five terms, I don't want to say we've had five terms in Highway Department. But, uh, anyway, we feel like we've accomplished a lot, and we've had a lot of you quick. And, you know, none of the things we've done would be possible without y'all guys, you know? It's just that we can do nothing really without y'all coming together, which we do get state credit on, buddy, too. But making decisions, helping us to make decisions, and helping us roll money into next year and even the following year. We have, you know, if it was still a meeting and there's a question going on, it's three years just to have one piece of equipment. But things like that can be done, and we really appreciate it. Finance has really worked well with us, and I would say, oh, everybody, that's a way to do it. But anyway, but we appreciate that. We appreciate y'all guys, we appreciate finance. And, uh, you know, we just hope and share things keep going good, and we keep making a lot of progress in there. We thank y'all, and thank you very much.
I guess we can move forward to announcements. Are there any other announcements? Entertain a motion to adjourn. First, second, any opposed? Can not go on. Three minutes adjourned. Thank you, everyone.